Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all right.
Good evening. It's February 26 and the time is 5:31 PM. And we are starting our work session portion of city council events tonight and we are going to start with mayor updates from Ms. Pacheco.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. The mayor's office just has one announcement tonight and that's just a reminder to those of you who expressed interest to do the tour of potential office space. That will be tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, starting at PEDCO and then we'll go from there to see the Pope Block Building. Just wanted to remind those of you that were interested that we'll start at 9 o'clock.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, well, I guess we'll start with our first guest tonight and that will be Mr. Romero, our lobbyist with his current update. Hello, Mr. Romero.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President Aliff, members of City Council and Mayor Graham. Hope you can hear me. Wanted to cover a couple of important topics this evening. The first is, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, it's on your master bill tracker, but it was something that Counselor Martinez brought to my attention today and I really do think these are really two important bills considering the demographics of Pueblo and they have to do with childcare. The first bill is House Bill 241223 and again, we'll create just, you know, I hope this isn't complicated for you, but we'll create a bill tracker after this meeting on childcare issues. And there are two that are really important that Counselor Martinez brought to my attention. We've been tracking them on your master tracker, but we hope that City Council will look at these bills and potentially take a position on them. One, again, is House Bill 1223, Improved Access to Childcare Assistance Program. What this bill does, it hasn't been calendered yet. This is one, obviously, if City Council is interested, we may ask you to give testimony on this. It simplifies the application process, introduces a universal application and limits required information, prohibits counties from adding extra eligibility criteria. Redeterminations require only updated information. You know, some of the really positive things in the bill grants a 90-day presumptive eligibility based on self-attestation means they basically essentially describe what their economic situation in aligns income qualifications with the universal preschool standards, allows counties to exclude certain income guidelines. Employee benefit provisions of this allows childcare provider employers full benefits regardless of income. Payment and copayment pays providers based on enrollment, not attendance with weekly advance rates and permission employers to cover copayments limited to 7% of family income. We think it's a really good bill. It's one that we've highlighted for you tonight, but hopefully it's something that you can take a look at. If you have any questions about it, please get back to us. Second bill is House Bill 1237 is Programs for the Development of Childcare Facilities. This is calendared for March 6th and transportation, housing and local government. Again, if this is a bill that you're interested in, would like to testify and we can assist you on that. The bill creates three new programs, eight aimed at addressing childcare facility development accessibility. Firstly, the childcare facility development toolkit and technical assistance program provides technical assistance to childcare providers, developers, employers and local governments to understand the technical aspects of planning, developing, building and co-locating childcare facilities. The program prioritizes projects in areas of greatest need across the state and require annual reporting on assistance provided. Secondly, the childcare facility development planning grant program incentivized and supports local governments in making regulatory updates or improvements to streamline the development of childcare facilities. The program, which is really important, the program provides grants for implementing policy or regulatory tools and requires reporting on grant distribution use. Lastly, the childcare facility development capital grant program provides funding to construct, remodel, renovate or retrofit childcare facilities to meet local needs. So those are the two we wanted to highlight for you this evening. But the second thing that we wanted to highlight for you this evening is that the governor came out with his, had a press conference this afternoon on his roadmap to reduce air pollution. It's called, you know, the roadmap is called 2.0. We sent that information over to you late this afternoon. We've been in committees all afternoon, so we apologize for the lateness of providing that information to you, but these, the bills are starting to be introduced that impact air quality, air permitting and air enforcement. We sent with the information we sent this evening, we met with the Kenny Group who represents Everest and they asked us to convey to the city a request that the city and the mayor consider a resolution that would support one, a balance in terms of how these bills are presented and consider Casa impact to industry in Pueblo. The, the letter that we sent to you is one that, you know, we have a concern about is your lobbyists. It's a bill that hasn't been introduced yet. It's a bill that's going to be introduced by Senator Janey and Representative Rootnell and Velasco. And it, and if you look at the letter that was submitted on behalf of Everest, it says, it's come to our attention that Pueblo County is likely to be selected as one of the initial communities that would come under the Office of Environmental Justice and implementing environmental equity and cumulative impacts. And we understand as your lobbyists that you represent the city of Pueblo and you have to balance the needs of manufacturers and you also have to balance the needs of wanting to have good air quality in Pueblo County and the city of Pueblo. We, we're concerned. We express that concern to you for you to consider, you know, what this could do to Pueblo if we're designated. We think the other community would be Commerce City and then Pueblo County and what, you know, you'll have to consider the implications and the stigma that could occur from that. Over the years, Pueblo County, according to this letter, has faced unworth of negative stereotypes that have been translated into meaningful, that have not translated into meaningful support for addressing our region's pressing challenges in Southern Colorado. Labeling our county in the matter would only contribute to our underserved reputation without providing tangible resources to tackle the identified issues. In, in this letter that they would ask the city to consider, therefore, we strongly recommend making participation in this particular program optional contingent upon the consent and endorsement of local elected officials. The rest of the letter you can see. These bills are coming and, you know, the folks that we're talking to, both in the governor's office, our local representatives from Pueblo and then beyond Pueblo, leadership in both the House and the Senate obviously want to know what Pueblo thinks about these particular bills. So again, I want to emphasize this is a letter that they would ask City Council to consider in whatever form. When we met with the Kenny Group this past week, they said whether it would be a resolution or just signing off on the letter for those City Council folks and the mayor that would be supportive of this. Again, understanding that you've got to balance, you know, the concerns of manufacturers with all of the constituents you represent. So those are the two things that we wanted to bring to your attention. The childcare stuff, we thought was really important because of the demographics in Pueblo and we think they're really good bills for the city to consider. And then obviously now with the bills that we're starting to see and we've sent out, we'll send out again, updated information on the bills that have been introduced already regarding air enforcement and air pollution. And as I said, the one bill that is referred to in this letter has not been introduced, but it is going to be probably one of the most significant bills that will be lobbied in the legislature this year. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll stop and answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Any questions of Council? Mr. Counselor Flores?
Thank you. I'm really concerned about this environmental bill affecting our steel plant. And here's the reason, one of the reasons I'm really upset about this is that the state of Colorado is bragging all over the state about how the state of Colorado has reduced carbon in our state. So they're making that statement and it is my understanding that there's evidence that Pueblo actually had 38% of that, whatever they're bragging about. So Pueblo is providing 38% of what they're bragging for. We represent only 2% of the population. And, you know, so whatever we can do, you know, to try to tell our story. In my mind, it's the only time we get to hear from the state and people that don't know anything about our city. But when it comes to affecting our labor force, you know, they're right there forgetting about how that's going to affect us consequentially. So, you know, upon your advice, you let us know the timing on this because I think we as a community should lobby against anything that hurts our steel plant. And we haven't even opened up our rail plant yet and here they are already attacking something that doesn't exist yet. And if there's the opportunity to speak against anything that would hurt our steel plants, I'm here to volunteer. Thank you.
Counselor Flores, if I may, everything you said was absolutely correct. You know, there are communities in Colorado that aren't even meeting the bare minimum. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention and we'll get more information on is that not just Everest, but other manufacturers and industry in in Pueblo are planning a day at the Capitol where manufacturers and business from Pueblo, PEDCO, other leaders in, in, in Pueblo would like to make a day and have their, their message known to both leadership, our delegation, but sponsors of the bill. Once we get that date, we think it's going to be somewhere in mid, mid-March. We'll let you know about that. But right now, I think the most immediate thing is for you to consider this letter that we sent to you and either take that, that language and, and either sign off on the letter or if you decide you'd like to do a a resolution, whatever the legal format you think would be most appropriate to give it the most import, to make it the most important. We think it's really, really important. These bills are going to move fast. This particular bill on the designation, what I'm really concerned and maybe it's my background as a lawyer, but I just worry about, you know, the designation with us and Commerce City and not, that's not to disparage Commerce City is, you know, what's that look like for, for potential employers coming into Pueblo or industry or, you know, new jobs? What does that look like when they see these two communities sort of set out? It makes it look like, you know, we're the communities that, that are the most, you know, most responsible in a sense for pollution and that's not the case. And I understand, you know, you know, what the sponsors are trying to do, but I, I'm also concerned about what the stigma that could, that could leave for the community. So.
The strategy that we use also involve Governor Polis in making sure he vetoes anything that would go through. It seems to me that it would be better just to go to the top and and, you know, once we see this, this bill and, well, maybe work both sides, I guess, but we need a full court press here. Thank you.
I agree.
Any other questions, Counselor Martinez?
I was going to say I support what Ms. Flores said. Pueblo is not the stepchild for the, for the northern part of the state and having worked up there for 35 years and doing the things that I've done and then having just returned from the CML to see how they look upon us is unbelievable. I worked at the CF and I, when I graduated from college in the summer of 68 and it's a very, it's a very prominent industry in this community and is, and and has been the livelihood for thousands of people as it relates to this community. So whatever you can do, again, I support what Mr. Flores has said. Thank you.
Gil, so Martinez.
Thanks, Gil, and thanks for sending over the two childcare bills. I think that this is really going to impact more families to get access to affordable childcare, but also get more licensed providers to hopefully open up here in Pueblo, which I think we desperately need. So I'm hopeful that counselors will take a look at those two bills that Gil mentioned earlier as it relates to childcare. Because I think that they could be really good. I guess my question is more for the mayor's office or Ms. Sykes. We got some letters of support today signed. Are they, so are we signing as individuals of City Council and not then voting as a group per, to support each bill?
Right. We decided at the last council meeting that because we could never come to a conclusion, the entire council, the resolutions were not able to be drawn up quick enough. So some of these bills will be voted on before. So we decided if the council wants to individually be in favor of or opposed, my office would draft the letters and you've received the letters tonight to sign and then my office will scan them and send them to Gil and Gil will get them to where they need to go.
Got it.
So that's why I had sent the email about two weeks ago about who wanted to support or not support a certain bill. So some of, some of the letters have multiple signatures. Some of them will have multiple supports and then.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Gil. And then the letter that you had sent, you just sent, just came through my office for the air bill. So they'll have a chance to, to read and decide if they want to support that one. It should be in your inboxes, I believe. It just came out a few minutes ago.
And the only thing I was going to add, Mayor, is that I think we had been asked whether or not you should, you know, we should provide the address and we can provide all of the addresses and the room numbers. We think it's more effective if you send them us and we'll hand deliver them to each legislator, either on the committees of reference that will be hearing these bills and then hand carry them to our delegation. We just think it has more impact. But if you disagree or say, hey, I'd like to just get mine in the mail, we can get that information to you. We just, you know.
I think we want you to hand deliver them. I think they're going to be emailing them. If they didn't already send them today, they'll send them first thing in the morning because now the council has them at their disposal to sign. So we appreciate you hand delivering to all the committee members.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
President Aliff.
Mr. Romero, I was just having a conversation with the chief of police and it's my understanding that there's some type of legislation coming down that won't allow police officers to handcuff people when they're in the prone position. And I don't want to debate that or talk about that. What I, what I want to make sure that I reiterate because I haven't had this opportunity to. It's, it's the number one priority for the city of Pueblo to, to address our crime issues and many of our crime issues are caused by by crazy legislation that comes out of Denver that has hurt us over the last six to eight years. And we need to know way ahead of time when these things are happening so we can be very proactive in in, in, in addressing the needs of our, our police department, being the police department, the prosecutions, the DA's office, anything that happens in that way. And, and I don't see that as, in the emails that I get as a big priority, but I think it needs to be pushed up.
Well, President Aliff, we will create, we created a, a, a bill tracker around criminal justice. I'm not familiar with that bill, but I absolutely will, we will find it after this call. I haven't seen that one. We've been really tracking criminal justice bills. And we know that our sheriff, our, our local sheriff has testified on a couple of bills around, you know, recruitment, which we talked to you about last week, but I have not seen that arrest one. We will look for it and we will send it out to you and then we'll, we'll look at our updating our criminal justice bill tracker for you just so you see the most up-to-date bills that are being introduced. And, you know, we're at this point where, where most of the bills have been introduced, but they continue to come. And so we'll look for that one as soon as we find it. We'll get it out to you this evening or first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to get back to this, these resolutions about supporting various bills or causes or whatever. And I was going to ask our city attorney for some advice. I wanted to bring the subject of these resolutions up again and I'm a little bit concerned about who can make this decision, number one. And number two, if we have to vote on whether or not the whole council signs it, we use the Democratic Party. You still have three votes that could be against it, I guess, but here's my issue and I'm going to give you an example. One of the letters is having to do with a bill called the Front Range Passenger Rail District. And this council and PACOG put me on that committee because they wanted somebody from City Council to be in that district position. So now what the city of Pueblo is saying is that Dennis is with us. Well, we know he's, he's with us. He's our representative for the city of Pueblo. But why is he not being backed up by the very council and the very PACOG that put him in that position? It sounds like these letters are really diluted now. You know, we, in order to make them powerful, we should be, if we, if we vote them down, that's fine, but we should use the democratic process here so that the council that representing the city has a more forceful voice about these issues that are very, very important to us. This particular bill is just a cleanup bill. There's nothing radical about anything in that other than cleaning up the original law. And I find it, you know, I find that, I went ahead and signed it, by the way, but I want to know who, do we not have that? Who made that decision, I guess, and why?
I didn't make the decision. I can't answer that for you. I think the easiest way to do this and, and the smoothest way to do it, I think Counselor Flores is right. I don't think that there's anybody on this board that won't be supportive of that, of that resolution, but I think though the specific bills that you personally know and want to come before council, it's literally a very difficult process to get everybody on board. I would just create the resolution and have it brought, brought forth at the next meeting and voted on. There, there's no doubt that it's going to be supported. I don't agree. I'll, I'll sign the letter. I think everybody here will sign the letter. But I can't speak for everybody. I'm just saying the resolution should come forth off of a request from, from a counselor.
So if you remember President Aliff, this was the email that I had sent two weeks ago, the Tuesday of the holiday, that they, the resolutions have to be drafted and put on the agenda by that Thursday at noon. And because we got no answers back, no resolutions were drafted in time. So then when we asked Mr. Romero, how could we still made our voices heard? He said that we could do individual letters of support. So that's why we took this route, Counselor, for this because we wanted to make sure that our voices were still heard, but we didn't have enough time to get resolutions for tonight's agenda. So that's why you have the letters. So it's not because we, we don't want to represent the entire council. It's because with that short timeframe of 48 hours, the entire council did not answer the emails. And so the law department was not able to draft the resolutions for any of the bills. There were several bills that Counselor Mastry wanted to support or non-support Counselor Martinez and yourself. But because we didn't get those answers back before noon on Thursday, we were not able to draft resolutions. So this was the easiest way to still have Pueblo's voices heard. So if the, the letters can, can still be open to anybody that wants to come and sign before we send them to tomorrow, but this one was such a time crunch that we wanted to make sure Gil was able to present these letters and committees this time.
And to remind everybody, most of these, some of these resolutions have nothing to do with legislative issues or community organizations that need support from the, from the city. It's our own grants within the system. We do this. So it's much more than just House, House and Senate bills. But, okay, but this is an exception is what you're saying.
Just because we didn't have enough time. I know some of these are in committee right now. Isn't that right, Gil? And you thought it would be better if we were able to have something to present right now before the bill gets across the line if it's something that we're not in favor of. So this was just our way to act quickly and be representatives of Pueblo.
Um, the only thing I have is I didn't get any of the bills that I did oppose. I didn't get a, a paper stating that I opposed.
Okay.
Certain bills.
I'll have them reach out to you tomorrow.
And then, Mr. Romero, on your first childcare bill that you went over, did you say it was a, going to be a requirement for child, childcare providers to have health insurance?
No, 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 there's no, no. There, I, now, if you look through the, the, that piece in the bill, that was not something that was, was required.
Okay. All right then.
But can I just, can I just say one thing, Madam Chair, just in terms of what the mayor said? Timing is everything on these bills. So, you know, we, we need to get them to, to the legislators before they vote on the bill. So timing is important. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Romero.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
On the timing of those letters, because everything moves so quickly at the legislature, the letters can go far. We can still do resolutions. So once the letters are sent, if there's still time, we can still do a resolution. So that doesn't preclude the resolution. It's just getting that timely to our lobbyists.
So, but we will have to, to, I guess we're only drafting, drafting resolutions for the ones that we have a majority in favor for, correct? Because otherwise we're drafting resolutions and we'd have to individually vote on them to make sure that they were being done.
Yeah. So we can draft the resolution. You folks would still have to vote and see how it came out. But that, that's still available, but it's just a longer process.
Okay. All righty. Well, thank you. Um, our next guest is Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority Project and they're going to talk to us about one of their upcoming projects.
Let's see here. Good afternoon. President of the City Council staff. We're coming before you to discuss a project located at the northeast and northwest corners of Dillon Drive in Colorado Highway, State Highway 47, immediately north of the Pueblo Mall and north of the Target. The site was a lowland area that was created kind of in a a retaining, a water retaining situation when they built the highway and constructed Dillon Drive. As part of putting the property into productive reuse, the developer is undergoing a redevelopment plan where in some cases they're actually raising the site 20 feet of structural fill to facilitate a redevelopment. This project has been in the city's development review system for two years related to the grading improvements, the operations in the flood plain, all the other things associated with getting to the point where they are today, which is they're actually filling the site and have permits to do, do so. the point where they are today, which is they're actually filling the site and have permits to do, do so. Given the costs of the extension of municipal utilities boring under the state highway, the developers requesting the assistance of the Urban Renewal Authority to help fund those public improvements. So we wanted to brief you today about this, this particular project. Urban renewal was contacted by the developer and the board instructed the staff to do the preliminary study to do the blight determination. And then once we determine preliminarily as a staff that it met the statutory criteria for blight, then we would move forward with an impact study and an analysis. We are in this, the analysis period. And the reason why this is brought to you now as opposed to many months ago is we, we had a logjam of getting all of our projects and activities through this, the city system. We have projects that it has literally taken three years when it should have only taken six to nine months. So I think some of those obstacles have been remedied. And, you know, collaborating with the development community and our 13 member board, you know, we're, we're able to, to bring some of these projects to fruition. You in fact have two on first reading tonight that you'll be considering at a public hearing in two weeks. So this site, which is, there's this aerial site plan that shows the conceptual redevelopment is 17 acres, six parcels of ground that need to be subdivided and a special area plan processed through the city, reviewed by your planning and zoning commission and recommended for approval. This proposal anticipates about 67,600 square feet of commercial retail office development, a few retail buildings, potential convenience store, coffee shop, quick serve, quick serve restaurant, municipal or medical office buildings. Those are the uses that we're analyzing as part of this, and that's kind of the development mix that the developer is anticipating the completed project would facilitate. Our preliminary numbers indicate that there could be capacity for 9.7 million in potential tax increment over a 25 year period that the municipal sales tax collection during that period of time would be about 10.36 million. Again, we're in the preliminary stage of this analysis. And as we get those numbers refined, we will prepare the reports and forward those to all the taxing bodies, including the city, as we work through the system. So we just wanted to, to bring this to your attention, address any concerns that you might have at this stage. No development agreement has been discussed or negotiated between the Urban Renewal Authority Board and the developer because they don't know, they're in the middle of their subdivision submittal process where they're determining things such as the intersection on the north side, I forget the name of the street. It was like 40 something, 40th Street. There's a concern whether or not that's going to be a lighted interchange or a roundabout. Well, each has its own separate set of costs associated with it. Additional construction concerns or issues, for example, a roundabout typically takes up more ground than a signalized intersection. And if you're familiar with that roadway, you know, it's an elevated, super elevated roadway in some parts and elevated in others. So some of those decisions haven't been met yet or haven't been decided yet. So as they get through the process and completely understand what the state highway department's requirements are going to be, then we can talk about potentially using tax increment to, as part of a redevelopment arrangement to facilitate the development. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The developer is here. But really today is just kind of an informational issue because you do have pending applications before your city planning department and public works.
Any questions from council? Mr. Flor, Counselor Flores?
Yes, I, I, I wanted to maybe lay the groundwork a little bit on this project. Just so that everybody knows, the developers in this case are from Pueblo.
Yes, sir.
And number two, they have huge investments in the community. I think they run several other hotels.
That is correct.
You know, three or four. So they're, they're totally invested in the community. Number three, they remove a floodplain area. This is, was considered to be a, what's called a 100 year special flood hazard area A under, under FEMA. And so technically, they're going to, they're going to elevate this property so that we're out of a floodplain. A lot of people, a lot of people don't remember that when the Pueblo Mall was built, it was almost a diselevation. And I remember the, the huge bulldozers that, that brought that elevation up above the flood zone. And the reason that's important is because you can't get financing if you're in a special flood hazard area. Otherwise, a, a bank will not lend you money. And so this is, that's really, really important. And then also it's going to clean up that whole east side with the homeless. So I mean, you've got a lot of characteristics here of some, of a project that really does so many things. And also provides an opportunity for the city to, to thank these developers. I mean, they've got so much invested already in our city and their local residents. I just want to say that I, you know, I, I would proudly ask you to, to proceed and make this successful. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Thanks, Jerry. For, did I, I, because I was trying to reply there the other day, and that's not a town that I normally frequent. Is there dirt being moved?
At the, the Dillon site?
Yeah.
Yes, it's currently, they're currently halfway or substantially along with a, a grading act program. They had to raise the site 20 feet in some spots. This is not an insignificant amount of dirt.
Oh, my gosh.
That they're moving. This is a tremendously expensive project that they've undertaken. They've been in this and they've actually had to spend millions of dollars to get to this point. And so part of the urban renewal process, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg sometimes in that you don't want to start the urban renewal process until you're far enough along where you know you have a a real project and you have a real project shortfall to justify the use of public funds. You know, some are broad in general in nature, large areas. You create urban renewal to prime the pump for development. In other cases, they're very specific. This is a very specific project where we will know upfront. Here are the costs. Here's the community's contribution of future tax increment to, to build that infrastructure. And so the infrastructure needs are just tremendous for this site.
Yeah, 20 feet is substantial.
No, it's, it's, it's substantial.
So if this was just informational, is the next step, you guys doing the blight, the blighted survey?
We've already gone through, in, in order to, for them to proceed with the grading activities and the part of the blight determination, we've already taken that snapshot in time. There was a home there, a single family residence that had been, that had fallen into disrepair, homeless individuals were going there. The developer just had to demolish the home, repair fences, do a lot of other things to get the site ready. We did the analysis and then they, on their own dime, decided that time was of the essence and they decided to start moving dirt with the permits necessary to do so from the city.
Okay. So what would be the next step then?
The next step for us is unless there's any substantial concern, objection, we would go ahead and, and move forward with the next phase, which would be finalizing the impact study, impact report, which we have to send to the local taxing bodies for the purposes of discussing the impacts with them and getting their concurrence or their, their consent on establishing an urban renewal district. And then once we have that, those issues resolved, it'll go to the city planning commission, the urban authority board, and then we'll come to you to make the blight determination and then determine whether or not an urban renewal project should be established.
What's your board say?
Uh, they're very supportive. I mean, it's a very, it's, it's a very difficult site to build. Extremely difficult. It's, you know, they're extending city utilities and in fact, it could be that they might be able to, that someone could reclaim additional ground that's in that area. If you're familiar with the topography, the lands to the, to the west or lowland areas. If you do anything over there, you got to raise all those sites. So it's, it's, it's a tough project.
Me. Since that's in District Two supposedly, we're talking right off of Highway 50, right below the Walmart and that area on the east and, I mean, yeah, on, on the east and west side, there are all the excavations going on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, it's District One, Joe. It's District One. It, it, it is District One.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, you know, I'm, we're, Pueblo always welcomes more in new development. And so I have no problem with bringing in new development. My question is to use about the statutory process of how this is going to be done. Because you're going ahead and moving through all of these stages without really consulting with council and asking for their permission to move forward. Um, is that, are we outside the process now? Inside the box, then can you explain that?
We have, and we can file that legal opinion with the city attorney's office if you, if you would like us to do that.
Is it part of the process?
Part of thi- this activity is optional. In this, the Urban Renewal Authority has a board has the ability to bring projects to the city as it determines are necessary. Similar to like if the city's planning and zoning commission decided that it was necessary to do a neighborhood plan in the city, they would have the ability to come to you and bring a proposal. Okay, so that's what, really what we're talking about. In some cases, city council directs the urban authority directly, you will go do this. And then we have no choice. We have to do it. But it's a, it's a discretionary activity when the board decides. And it's always in response to a specific application, a specific request. The developer came to us.
Yeah, because I mean, like you say, they, you know, they've broken ground, obviously this, this is their plan. Or they've been planning it for years.
Years.
And so are they coming to you late in the game? Or because I, as a developer, having worked in that field before, we would never start a project without assuring that we are going to get the funds where we're going to have a shortfall.
Well, this developers.
Otherwise, we don't need them. We just continue with the project at our own expense.
Well, they, they acquired the property and in order to do anything with it with productive use, you have to raise the site. So that was a given, uh, one way or the other.
Correct.
For them to have wet utilities and everything else necessary to actually develop it for more intensive land use, in this case, commercial. You know, those are, those are tremendous costs. Cost escalation has exponentially gone, I mean, the cost of materials and everything has gone up. Boring under the state highway, as you know, is a very expensive endeavor.
Exactly.
And it potentially provides additional utility connections to other properties in the area. So the first end bears the, the biggest, largest cost in this case. So as part of this analysis, as part of this discussion, you will be determining was it, is this property blighted or that snapshot in time? We're going to recommend or advise that it was. And then you will determine if the urban renewal plan is appropriate. And if the urban renewal plan is appropriate, then the urban authority will work with the developer to come up with an agreement to facilitate that.
Yeah, because for us to be included that late in the game, I mean, there's always a possibility that any council could reject it.
That is true.
And they've put millions into it. So
That is correct.
To, to say that, you know, this is an urgent, you know, an urgent request for finding a shortfall. It seems to me like it's a shortfall later in the project and you've invested millions and millions of dollars to really not know what the end result is. It's just a, this is coming just from a logical point of view and having background in development and construction.
I can't speak to the developer's risk tolerance. I really can't. It's a very attractive site. It's a desirable site. For years, back in 2004, when I first started to work for the city, we tried to get a TGI Fridays there. And it was that issue that the numbers never worked. And urban renewal is a tool to assist projects that just don't pencil out. Now, if they can't get the project going, they're probably going to be out millions of dollars. But that's their decision as a developer.
That's why I just say it's like late in the game. Why wouldn't they do it earlier in the game? When they're going through all of their.
I don't think that they had a true, complete understanding of the city's subdivision exactions and the improvements required by the state of Colorado Department of Transportation.
Before they pulled the trigger on a project.
Before they got to this point. You know, they have to update traffic studies. There are roadway improvements. There are a lot of things over there that they're going to be asked to do. A, a traffic signal, for example. They're not generating all the traffic to warrant a traffic signal because you probably already reaching warrants today. And they haven't asked the city directly for a development incentive directly, which in some communities they do. So in this particular case, urban renewal, I think is a good tool to use. But again, that's your discretion after a public hearing has been done.
And so the studies are going to be defining whether this is going to be necessary or not.
Yes, the studies will say, we believe that it's blighted. And we believe that it's necessary for this urban renewal plan to be put in place to provide the mechanism to fund the improvements. Now, the specific piece of it in terms of the financing of improvements can be done several different ways. It can be done through a development reimbursement arrangement. It could be done through issuance of bonds. It could be done through a variety of other different financial mechanisms that meet the definition of bonds. So how that is done, how that is laid out is to be determined. We don't have the final costs of what this infrastructure is. And once there is an arrangement and a deal, the urban renewal authority has to certify that those improvements were made. We have to look at the receipts. We have to sign off on anything to pay the debt service of whatever arrangements made.
And this question is for Ms. Sykes. Ms. Sykes, so it's a discretionary process? It's not a, a process set forth by statute and regulation? That there is something that we need to follow or is that something that you need to look into?
So I know that this is coming out of the context of the other, the other projects. PURA is governed by statute, so I have taken a look at that statute. And I think that Jerry is correct that it can be brought to council a, a couple of different ways. Council can direct, PURA can bring projects to council to consider. And so if you want a, a process outlined, I'd have to dig into deeper. I can't say that right now. But the urban renewal authority is all governed by statute.
And so, yeah, if you can look into that, because that has been brought to our attention in the past. And we just want to just clarify and be clear. And we also want advisement from you stating that that is.
Why don't I suggest we enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the urban renewal authority and the city that prior to the urban renewal authority spending its funds on a prospective study that the city council consent to that study? That would make our lives a heck of a lot easier. And we don't want to waste time or money or be disingenuous to our development community. If people want, we are as transparent as we could possibly be. You have two city council members on our board. I don't know where a lot of this negativity is coming from, but if we need to have an intergovernmental agreement to lay out exactly how an urban renewal project is created in further clarification of a statute, that is fine with us.
Well, I don't think that it's really a negative conversation. I think, you know, when we're advised by our legal advisor of certain things that we have to take consideration because they're the legal entity that we operate under and we make our decisions under. So if they've told us this, if we've heard this in one sense and we hear something in a different sense, we need clarification because we are the body that's authorizing all of these things.
True. And we have, we have our legal expert that has issued a legal opinion with respect to this matter.
Yeah, but your legal expert is for PURA. It's not for this body here.
If I could just chime in before we get too far down this road, I think it may be helpful if. If I could just chime in before we get too far down this road, I think it may be helpful if I took a closer look at the statute.
Correct.
And I can I can meet with council for PURA. Maybe we could come up with some sort of of roadmap of what the process looks like. So it's some sort of a flow chart. So everyone will be clear of what the process is under different circumstances, and then everybody will know what to expect.
Correct.
So so why don't we have that conversation? And then we can, if you'd like, we can bring it back to another work session and we can talk through it. But I think that that might just be the the best thing is to come up with some sort of flow chart with with what the process is. And then I can look into the other issues as well and in more depth.
Correct. We just would like to get on track to make sure that we, as a city, are protected under these.
Absolutely. And I think everybody needs to get on the same page. So I think that'd be helpful for urban renewal as well. And so we just need all get on the same page.
Yeah, for us up here on council to to go against our legal opinion, our legal advisor is we're not, we would not be following through with our fiduciary duties. And so now that there's a question brought into it, I think we really need to open the conversation, be transparent, and get down to the facts of the matter.
Understood.
May I say one thing, too? Part of the process is P and Z, too. Your planning and zoning has to also approve this. So so when you look at the flow chart, that has to be included as part of the urban renewal process, okay? Because you're approving planning and zoning after the fact.
Mm hmm. Mr. Williams, you know, council is the final vote.
Absolutely.
And a lot of times, we have no idea what process is taking place, except for when they're gotten put in front of us for five-minute presentations.
I was just, my point was is that part of the process for an urban renewal project.
Yes, I heard that.
Should include P and Z, too.
Yes, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is that we would like to be, I don't know about the rest of council, maybe I'm just speaking for myself. But before I make decisions on multimillion-dollar projects that involve taxpayer money, I'd like more than just a fifteen-minute conversation or just a hey. And it's not just urban renewal. It's a lot of things that come in front of us.
I totally agree with you.
Great. Then we're all on the same page.
Makes my life easier.
Counselor Flores.
I just wanted to, I just had a quick question, and that is, the process that you're using for this project, is this unusual?
You know, this goes back many, many, many years. Urban renewal would. It all comes about due to a north side proposed urban renewal plan that was filed in two thousand seven. And it was very controversial because it took the downtown north of Fourth Street all the way to Mineral Palace Park. And there were some individuals who did not like the fact that urban renewal at that time was considering that broad of an area. So and it it died. It didn't didn't fi- and finally end up going anywhere. But the fact that Urban Renewal was studying it was a hot issue back then. As part of that process, we had what I would refer to as a gentleman's arrangement between myself and who was the city planning director and the city manager at the time, to Mike Tedesco, who was sitting where I'm sitting, and said, hey, let's moving forward, let's just try to bring it to council first. We are now under a different form of government. And a lot of the players that were involved then are no longer here today. And so if you want to clarify it and make make it, you know, very specific, that's fine. We do not enjoy creating new project areas. It is tremendously expensive for us, and it takes a tremendous amount of time. And the most political part of the entire urban renewal process is the creating of a district. It's not replacing a sidewalk. It's not demolishing a building. It's getting a plan created. Because we're dealing with the other taxing entities, some of which contribute way more tax increment to the project than the city of Pueblo does.
It's funny you phrase it that way, because you say we don't like to, but that's cutting your job.
I have to do what the board directs me to do. I'm sorry.
Exactly. Counselor, President Alaf.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you specifically because I kind of take this like you're doing what I asked you to do. And I had concerns early on and some other issues that city council was not brought up to date and not in the loop on on several projects. So I felt and you felt and your board felt, obviously, that it was very important that you get city council involved early. And this is a perfect example of getting us involved early. Here's a project. We're going to come back to you if everything comes out, and we're going to ask for your permission to do specific things. But when you come back and ask us for that permission, we can't say, well, what the heck is this about? I didn't even know that this was going on, or our members on Urban Renewal hasn't haven't included us in the conversation. And I think there was a great disconnect between city council and urban renewal in previous projects because they weren't involved at this in the infancy of a proposal. Okay? So I'm happy you did this. I'm very happy that we're looking at this early. I think we're putting the cart way ahead of the the horse when we're talking about what specific things we're going to do on this specific project when no specifics have even been talked about. There's no development agreement. There's no anything. You're simply showing us a project that may come back to us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. And I thank you because that's exactly what I asked you to do and what I asked you to start doing. And I hope city council appreciates the fact that that's what we're doing tonight. We're not making decisions on anything. And I understand, Counselor, the chair's concerns about some other things that certainly need to be. Anytime we have a question or somebody has a specific concern about a process, the right thing to do is to get the answer. And there there's, I see no problem with that. And I don't think that you guys have ever acted like you shouldn't give it to us. Or I don't think that the city attorney's office has ever said they wouldn't give that to us. So anyway, make a long story short, thank you. I hope we continue this type of communication. And you come forward with these projects and keep us in the loop on what's going on at Urban Renewal. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have the Pueblo Harp Boathouse Project. And so if we can have Ms. Carter to stand. Hi, how are you this evening? Great.
Yeah. Neighborhood in urban tax increases to fix the flooding and pipes underneath and the infrastructure that's busted would then increase somewhat the incremental tax in reference to the property that's in being included. If.
I don't know that they could. That's probably. Good evening.
All right. Good evening. For those that I've not met yet on council, my name is Lynn Clark. I'm the executive director of the Pueblo Riverwalk. I've worked there since two thousand ten. So I have a little bit of history with this place. To my left is your well-known Parks Director, Stephen Meyer.
And I've been here many, many years. We're on the heart project. So I think I've been here when the, when we first built it, so been part of it.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't want to take too much time talking about history, but you know, history for this community is really important. Next slide. I don't know if it's not working. There we go.
All right, what are we doing wrong? Oh, there we go.
Okay, so, you know, going back to nineteen ninety-one, this is the People's Project. This is a project that defines what Pueblo, Colorado.
Talking about some of the north of the cities.
Where, you know, we kind of get overlooked. Well, when we started building this project, we were not overlooked. Denver doesn't have a riverwalk. Colorado Springs doesn't have a riverwalk like this. Fort Collins does not have one like this. This is something that is unique to southern Colorado and something we should be very proud of. The original backers of the Riverwalk believed that this would bring economic activity, improve the quality of life of the residents. We created a place to bring friends and family. That's what this was really about. Not to just improve our economy, but to have a beautiful place for Puebloans to come to and enjoy. We were preserving the history of Pueblo's central downtown. If you remember what the Riverwalk looked like before we started any of this project, these pictures will give you a little, you know, flashback to what the view to City Hall was from the other side of Main Street. It was a stormwater outfall. And it was okay, very natural, very unkept, but not the look we're going for in our beautiful city of Pueblo. Lake Elizabeth was originally designed as a cooling pond for the power plant, and that goes all the way back to southern Colorado power. It's been there a long, long time. Um, that has been cleaned up, and it's a beautiful amenity on the upper part of the Riverwalk. The view from Union Ave, if you recognize the little train that's there in the parking lot, that's where Kelly Falls and the the collective shop is. Um, Blue Ocean, our little welcome center where we have the boats parked, and PBR is down in that area, too. Big difference from, you know, nineteen ninety-one. We have done a lot of nice things in this community. So I want to talk to you a little bit about our soul. People refer to the Riverwalk as the jewel, the heart. But why did we build it? Something you want a community to reflect is the special characteristics of what makes our community different. And I think here in Pueblo, we are striving to be different. We don't want to be like northern Colorado. We don't need to be. We are unique and beautiful, and we have strengths that they don't have. Downtown Pueblo did not have a town square. When the planning department got together a long, long time ago, long before I was at the Riverwalk, they were looking for a way to create a town square where you could gather, socialize, celebrate. Well, in our town square, we have one of the most beautiful amenities, and it's water. A lot of cities don't have the power of water to put in in a unique like beautification project like this. But because Board of Auto Works, which is now Pueblo Water, had the foresight to get enough water rights to do something like this with our water supply, we could actually do this. I've been interviewed a lot in the past fourteen years, and they're like, Lynn, what would you say at other cities? Should we build a Riverwalk? I said, you know what you do? Build to your strengths. Water here is a strength, and that's why the Riverwalk made sense here. I think it's important that you understand that this project also engages youth. Since two thousand five, we've run an education program out of the Riverwalk administration. Um, it started out with a history book, a guide for fourth grade teachers about Pikes, Pikes Island, Pikes Journeys. It was fourth grade Colorado history. We have a little manual that has water experiments. Any school can come and participate in that program for free. All Pueblo schools are given the opportunity for a free boat ride to be included. Last year, we had almost five hundred kids from schools that don't often get to come to a, I guess, a field trip of this type, right? So they got a boat ride. They had pizza at Angelo's. It was sponsored by local business and the Association of Pueblo Realtors. Some of these schools are in your districts. Columbia, Minacoa, Boca, Fountain. We had two big school groups from Canyon City and another two from Rocky Ford. So we are attracting people from outside the community. Um, but I thought it was important to understand it's not just restaurants, bars, walking around. Like, we're trying to get to our youth, too. It's really important that they're proud of what we've built here. So tonight, we really want to talk about where we're going, next steps, right? If you've been down to the Riverwalk, you you're really familiar with what we've done so far. We have built several pieces of the regional tourism grant that I believe back in two thousand eleven, Pueblo was awarded that. The city and Urban Renewal put together this plan where there was different components that we said we would build as we found funding. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we completed the what we call Gateway Plaza. And it's that garden area with little S wall right in front of the PBR. That was completed shortly before the pandemic. So that was one of the other components that the Riverwalk said that they would try to to complete once we had funding. We received funding from the city and an EDA grant, which is a federal grant. The next step is going to where the channel would reach to Santa Fe. Um, that's really important because it gives us another gateway to a major roadway. Santa Fe is highly trafficked. And it's really important that, you know, people that come through Pueblo notice that we have a Riverwalk. You can't exactly see the whole thing from I twenty-five, but the more we build things and closer in proximity, the more people will know what's going on down here. So I want to talk to you about not just the channel extension, but the public building that we're building. This is a two-story public facility. The programming of this building is important to the continued operation of the Riverwalk boat operations as well as bringing tourism into our community. That north-facing side does face towards I twenty-five. There's a large events plaza in front of it where we can do a lot of like new things for the public. Whoops, go back. Okay, so this side of the building faces the Riverwalk Channel, and that's in what we call Gateway Park. Um, it faces towards Allen-Hamel Drive, like to orient you to where it is. There's there's a huge piece of the channel that those windows overlook. So on the bottom floor, on level one, is a public visitor center and restrooms. Boat ticket sales can happen down there. We can sell refreshments as people load boats. And one of the other important components, but not the only thing we need the building for, is the boat storage and maintenance. Those garage doors lift up when we need to do maintenance on the boats, or we need to put them away at night, or during inclement weather, or, you know, the off-season, which is a few months in the winter. Um, it protects those assets. The second floor would be Harp Office, as well as a conference room for public use. That is quite the view. For those that you're trying to entice to bring into the community and bring their money and their influence, PEDCO and other organizations try to show what the quality of life is like in this community, this is one of those places. It's not the only place, but it is one of those places. They could bring in prospects. They can hold meetings with other community leaders from outside of Pueblo and just put your best foot forward. Show them what we can do here. The top level is the rooftop. Um, that is a public event space, so it holds about a hundred and eighty-five people. And the floor plan is open. We can have furniture brought in depending on what type of event someone from the public would like to use it for. And again, you're going to have the most magnificent view that Pueblo has built overlooking the Riverwalk Channel. This building, you know, it will be viewable from I twenty-five. We've been up there. We've kind of sighted it. It's going to be pretty noticeable, and at night, it's going to be well-lit. So it will have some, you know, interesting lighting features that will really make it a beacon. Make people notice, make them ask questions, and and make them want to come down to the Riverwalk and then come downtown, spend their money. The rooftop deck is just another view of that. You can see it has a lot of open space at the moment. Um, it does overlook an event space, so you can really tie together an outdoor event with some indoor space, which the Riverwalk does not have anything like that right now. Um, weddings, birthday parties, meetings, movie nights with, you know, sports teams. They can come in and, you know, maybe the kids that play baseball want to watch like a baseball. the kids that play baseball want to watch like a baseball movie up there. That's, they can bring in a caterer from anyone who's got certification and licensing in, in Pueblo and have their um, party catered. Um, the Riverwalk's not going to get involved with that food and beverage service. The existing businesses will have that opportunity. That's the channel view. If you're standing up on Santa Fe Avenue. Um, you know, it's just a really nice view. Um, you know, going down the highway and, and you know, here's this beautiful amenity and, and I think people are going to want to park and walk. Um, and just, you know, come see what we've got to offer. This is the outdoor event space. Um, this, this is an, an important thing for Harp. Like, we have a lot of space on sidewalks. Um, we have some very uneven ground that we do some events on that is, it's, they're not ADA accessible. Um, if you are a mom with, you know, little kids in a, in a stroller and you're on the hill, you're, you're near the water channel, it's not real safe. Um, we really have been looking for like that level space, like not on the street, not in a parking lot. Um, something that's really close to the channel and you get that, that vibe, you know, it's like you're, you're at the Riverwalk, you're not just on a, at a city street festival. Um, we wanted it to feel different. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, but what Harp has transitioned to is to all free public events. There's no admission charge for boat opening, July fourth, holiday lighting, anything we do. Um, there are others that can rent the space and charge admission if they need to cover their expenses, but Harp does not. We want to make sure that it's open and available to every citizen of all economics, you know, places. So um, we don't want anyone to be left out. So the economic impact, we'll talk a little bit about the ROI. Um, knowing where we started in nineteen ninety one, I think that you could say that we have been successful. Um, several years ago, I asked City Sales Tax if they would just do a, a footprint of the Riverwalk businesses in the channel and we could talk about sales tax revenue in a smaller area. We were included in the downtown sales tax, so I really couldn't tell how we were performing. Um, over the past five years, we've had more information and we are pretty steady. And I put it in there, it's a thirty-four thousand month, dollar monthly average, about four hundred, six thousand dollars a year. We only have seven businesses. We have some of the most popular restaurants in the city. That's a lot of money for a little spot, right? So the property tax evaluation is important, too. Um, those buildings down there have the highest property tax evaluation in the county. We are building value and the business community understands that. So they are buying in. Job creation, there are six restaurants, um, soon to be seven. There's an empty space that will be filled in the next few months. Um, we have a little boutique, we have some salons. Um, it's, it's, it's a busy little place. The tourist activity and visitation, we're consistently about five hundred thousand visits. We do zip code studies and some other um, trail counting um, to kind of establish that number. Um, the development opportunities, like I said, there's mixed-use opportunities in, in, in our little neighborhoods still. And the business community is showing up. They know it's a good value. They know they're going to make money down there so that, you know, they're supporting us. So economic and social resistance. Um, before the pandemic, I was invited to Washington DC and I gave testimony to um, a Senate Committee about the resilience of a waterfront community. And I was asked to come because there's not many urban waterfronts like this. And I sat there with other communities that are much, much larger, um, and they're oceanfront or huge riverfront communities. And we talked about, you know, how, how do you build resilience when they had a lot of problems with flood and other like uh, weather events, you know, for us? I said, you know, our resilience was really in diversifying the economy. When the steel mill went down in the eighties, what did we have? We had steel. So we had to sit down and talk about like, what else could Pueblo be? And it goes back to like, where's the strength? The strength was in the water. Some people thought we could have a little water park or a little riverfront, just like San Antonio. The other thing you brought on board in those days was PEDCO to bring in other business and diversify our economy. So we were part of that thought. We were part of like changing the face of Pueblo. So tonight, I just wanted to give you a little bit of information. Um, I've been presenting on this particular project since twenty eighteen. That's how long this has taken. This, the county had given us money to do the schematic design in twenty eighteen. During the pandemic, um, my staff at my office and, and a lot of your city directors, we met online through Zoom meetings and completed the planning and the design concept. We did the DD, we did the, the construction documents. Um, and then we finally finished them. Um, so, you know, we got the bid back and I think we have a little more information that will be shared with you tonight about where we sit on the, the bid versus revenue sources. Um, and I think our, our mayor, Mayor Graham, has some more information to share. I don't know if you have questions specific to me in my presentation or if you want to wait till the end. Thank you.
Any questions so far?
I have some questions. Okay.
Go ahead.
The Harp expansion, uh, what, what are the plans on the other side of the Santa Fe?
Uh, so Councilman Latino, the plan, the, so there's a master plan at the Riverwalk. Someday, again, when we find funding, there would be a plan to go under Santa Fe, under I twenty five and hopefully connect to Runyon. Whether that's by river channel or pedestrian sidewalks, um, we don't know. We've not done a study on that side to see like if it's feasible. You do have a railroad to contend with, um, as well as a capped site that used to have your Rockwool uh, company there a long time ago. So they capped the site. But there is a master plan where it says we should connect with Runyon.
In other words, you go across Santa Fe to connect with Runyon, with the Runyon Lake, okay? What about the, the PBR building that's vacant over here? That's right there on the Riverwalk. What, what, you have plans for that?
So the city owns the first floor. Um, and in the current zoning for the Riverwalk, um, that should, that, because you're at the channel level, the zoning um, dictates that it should be either restaurant, retail, some sort of service for the public to um, engage in like entertainment or something like that on the Riverwalk in line with what we already have, the other restaurants and shops and salons and, and those types of things. Um, that would be up to the city of Pueblo, not the Harp Authority.
Well, obviously, on the, on the, on the east side, where, where Mission Foods is, there's that encapsulated hill with asbestos. So that's another thing that's going to have to be dealt with. We, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago when we had some folks in here. In addition to that, I have people say to me, why don't you advertise the fact that we have this jewel in the city? Like, there's no signage coming east. I'm sorry, excuse me, going south or north, there's no sign saying, come down and enjoy the, the, the wonderful environment and atmosphere of the Riverwalk.
So there is a sign that the state put up for us for ninety-six B. It used to say Colorado State Fair on it. Um, and we spoke to the state of Colorado about ten years ago and they changed it. And I think it has the El Pueblo Museum as well as the historic Arkansas Riverwalk on it in both directions as you approach downtown. Um, why there's not other signage, um, billboards are very expensive. My budget cannot bear that type of marketing. Um, I don't, we just don't have the money to do it. Billboards are very expensive. If we could find places where uh, landowners would permit a private sign to pee up, I would like look into that immediately. Um, Highway fifty, I don't know if those easements allow for private signage. We probably have, would have to go through the state. But I agree, like, there's, there's not enough advertising about what we've got down here, um, out on the highways.
I mean, I, I live in the area, okay? And I jog in the area and do those kinds of things and I, I, I don't ever recall seeing those signs. I really don't, really haven't.
Yeah, it, it's been a long time, uh, Councilman, since we um, had enough money to put up those billboards. Um, they are upwards of, you know, ten to twenty-five thousand dollars a year, depending on where you're putting them. And it's just outside our budgetary life. Um, you know, we, we partner with the Chamber, um, and other organizations in town to try to put together a little pot of marketing money, but it's still not enough. So we do a lot of social media, we do a lot of digital. But I, 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 I hear what you're saying, that we're, we're kind of leaving something on the table by not having signage. So I do agree with you and it's something I'm totally willing to look into to see if we can correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mayor, I guess you have something for us.
Council, I provided you with the Harp expansion bid results and revenue resources um, that were at your desk tonight. Um, as you can see, the base bid came in at thirteen million, three hundred and one dollars along with all the ad alternatives, um, and the contingency at ten percent at one point four million, bringing the total project to fifteen-nine. Um, you can see the revenue sources that the city has identified at this point, nine million being from Pueblo County and the one A funds that were voted on in twenty um, eighteen. Uh, Stephen Meyer, Lynn Clark and myself are going uh, to Manitou Springs on Friday morning. Um, we made it all the way to the interview process of the DOLA grant. And so we get to go give a seven-minute pitch on why Pueblo should receive this one million dollars uh, from DOLA, uh, to help pay for some of this project. It's a dollar-for-dollar match. And so if we are awarded that one million dollars, you'll see that the city has to allocate one million dollars underneath of it and it can only be from general fund. Um, under that, you'll see, um, Urban Renewal has it on their upcoming agenda to ask for two hundred thousand out of their um, Tiff District for the Riverwalk. And then you'll see ARPA revenue replacement, that's our ARPA city dollars that we have. Um, that don't have to fall under the uh, the treasury rules for, say, nonprofits or um, if we're giving the money to somebody else besides ourself. And then you'll see regular ARPA, five hundred and seventeen thousand. There's a lot of um, sanitary sewer expenses that come along with this project that regular ARPA um, would be able to cover and we still have a little bit of that money. And so you'll see that as our total funds being um, twelve million six. Um, Lynn mentioned that this is part of the RTA project. It's the same kind of project that the convention center um, was done under and the funds for that project, some of them were um, allocated through PEDCO. So you'll see a a point in there as a blank um, for half-cent sales tax. Um, so I guess uh, you can see that the total project cost total funds and then our shortfall is three point three million dollars. Um, so what I would do is ask the council to be open to um, ways of funding that three point three million dollars. I don't know if all three point three million will need to be funded because we do have a one point five million dollar contingency rate. Um, and so this is why we're bringing this presentation um, forward uh, to you tonight. My office has been working very hard on trying to find um, other funding sources so that this money does not necessarily all have to come out of general fund. But I would just like to remind the council that if this nine million dollars is not used from the county, we will have to return the funds and it cannot be used for another project. And that the previous council last November, December-ish, did purchase the pro, uh, property of the Ferguson um, for one point two million dollars already for this project. So at this point, the city does have a lot invested, a lot of time. Um, and, and the county is, has a lot of money invested as well. Uh, the bottom portion of it is some potential grant revenue that we might be able to also allocate. And then you'll see um, four hundred and fifty thousand um, from the Harp Foundation. This building and these bids have no furniture and fixings, um, fixtures um, in the building thus far. So that money has been being raised by the Harp Foundation to provide um, furniture and fixtures for the property. So um, this work session was to provide and be transparent and keep the council uh, apprised on the revenue sources and what the city's um, going to do. We will return after we hear back um, from DOLA to let you know where we are with that one million dollar grant. Did I leave anything out, Lynn or Stephen, on the funding sources? Um, so answer any questions if I can.
Any questions, Councilor Martinez?
Mayor, do we, so for the nine million for the one A, do, and when you say, um, we'll have to give that back if or it'll be appropriated to somewhere else?
Yeah, so the funding for the one A projects were very specific on how the money was spent. The Harp Boathouse and Channel Expens- Expansion were one of those projects. That's where the nine million dollars come from. So if we do not come up with the remainder of the funds, the nine million will go back to the county. And essentially, we've um, expanded the one point two million dollars for the Ferguson, Ferguson Building already. Um, and just all the time that the staff has spent over the last five years trying to put this project together.
So when you say give back, do we already have that money?
Uh, we don't have the money, but a contract has been written up between the county and the city. This isn't the only project. Um, we're also missing a million dollars for the Eastside Streetscape that the county still has to provide the funding for. And the Main Street and Union Street uh, master plan, there was also one A monies in that. So the pro, um, the county and the city will be entering into three different agreements for us to get those funds from the county.
And Lynn, what's the expected timeline for this? When orig- when, you know, now, I, I realize it's different since twenty eighteen, but.
So eh, the timeline for construction is eighteen months.
Okay, and it just depends on when we get, when we find the three point three?
Yes, yes. And something to kind of roll around in your mind is that um, this will create and support a hundred and fifty construction jobs.
Great.
Um, anyone else, Councilwoman Nala?
I want to make sure that everybody knows, excuse me, that in two thousand and eighteen, when the one A went out to the voters, this boathouse and this ex- expansion were, or at least the expansion was a part of that that one A uh, initiative that the community overwhelmingly supported. So there's a, there, there's a tre- tremendous amount of community support to get this done. Uh, it, it would just be a shame if we you know, throw in the towel and say that this is something we don't want to do. There is just no doubt. I mean, I'm with Lynn. I, I started working on the boathouse part with uh, the Harp Authority in two thousand and eighteen and it's just been it's just been a battle to get to this point and it, it would just be a shame not to, to carry on. I specifically don't know uh, how we're going to do it. But I think it's very important that we realize what the obstacles are at this point. And we look forward, and at least I look forward to hearing how the DOLA presentation goes and uh, how we can make this happen. But uh, we need to get it done.
Counselor Flores?
I just wanted to say something quickly. We all forget that this is an asset that belongs to the city. So it's uh, it's really uh, an asset that we could invest in and automatically get nine million dollars, potentially ten million dollars in equity in our own asset. So from a financial kind of view, it makes a lot of sense.
I'm sorry, where did you say the current million dollars from the city's coming from? Was that in the capital?
So the, the current million would have, it has to come from general fund. It can't have any other, um, it can't have any other source match if we receive that DOLA grant.
Okay, so you'd have to pay, so there's actually two million dollars in question there because?
Well, correct. So the, the DOLA grant has a match.
Okay. And um, yes, I know this was out in twenty eighteen and then, you know, but the boathouse was also, and the channel were, what, at seven million dollars estimated at that time?
So the cost estimate at that time was eight point seven?
Eight point seven.
Yeah, I mean, inflation and what we've been through in this country, the delays, it's just, um, and you know, the, the county had promised, you know, the eight point seven to cover it and we got them to nine million to at least, you know, take a bite out of what the current bid results were.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's the thing is with those um, valid initiatives, you know, when you don't pull the trigger until five years later, now six years later. I mean, that's where the difference comes in. And currently, um, I noticed you talked about the four hundred and six thousand in sales revenue that you currently generate because also, but we also assist you additionally, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand a year comes out of the budget to help you cover your expenses.
Absolutely. You're one of five partners, um, and we do receive um, funding from the county. Um, Urban Renewal Conservancy District, um, and Pueblo Water um, to do our operations and maintenance.
What is that total then from all entities?
It's, um, well, the total from the partners is about nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. Um, we do raise money through other avenues. We charge common area maintenance fees to the businesses on the property. Um, patio leases, parking, and we do raise Um, patio leases, parking, and we do raise over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in advertising revenue. From the businesses who want to, um, engage in advertising on the Riverwalk. So we, we use, you know, all the resources to put together our annual budget, not just the government money.
Mm-hmm. What do you expect, um, in a new building like this? What do you expect your, um, operating expenses to run? You know, especially in a bigger building than the little thing you have right now.
Right, right. So the building's about ten thousand square feet, and you know, we're, we're looking at probably eight, ten thousand dollars a year in total operation. Um, our plan is to once again go to the private sector. And see if this is worth naming rights or some type of advertising deal to supplement that operating costs on that building. I have a lot of good friends in, in, in the corporate parts of Pueblo that are very interested when this comes online and it's available. So, um, that's something that we've been thinking about very seriously since the inception. Because our funding, I mean, our partners are as generous as they can be, and we are, my staff, we're a bunch of penny pinchers down there. You know, we, we, we try to do the best we can with what you give us. And, you know, everyone's been really generous because the economy's been good. So we have gotten light years ahead of some deferred maintenance and some other issues that we had in the past. But we are very mindful about what we're spending the money on. Um, we pay a lot of attention to our maintenance. If you go down there and you, you see, we're replacing sidewalks, um, you know, the concrete. If, if people trip down there and they get hurt, I mean, we're, this, it puts the city and the HARP Authority at risk. So, um, we're mindful of like whatever, um, could be dangerous. We, we are like number one, anything that's a safety issue gets repaired as soon as possible. And visual appearance is the, of the utmost concern in our office, that when it doesn't look right, it's not okay. So we spend a lot of time taking pictures and, and getting things repaired down there.
Are you going to anticipate, um, more, to generate any revenue out of this building? I mean, with your rooftop deck or, what, what it, what is your anticipated revenue that you're gonna be generating out of this building?
I have not done a performa on the, the revenue from the facility rental, but, you know, looking at the kind of, um, facility that it is. I am sure that most weeknights and every weekend, we're going to be able to put, um, some revenue aside from our facility rental program.
Or during the season, right?
Yes, right, yeah, yeah. So it's gonna be like May through October. Um, the conference rooms are year round. Um, you know, but we are, you know, semi-seasonal. Um, the building will help us be a little more twelve months out of the year for smaller events.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, all those facility rentals will help the bottom line, um, you know, for running that building appropriately. With the utilities and just general maintenance, we have run a performa on what type of maintenance it will need over the first ten years. Something we've learned how to do down there. Um, you know, we have a list and Pueblo Water helped us put that together. So we kind of know what expenses are coming and when they would come. Um, you know, the heater goes out, the hot water heater. The HVAC, all those things will need repair, you know, after ten years or so. So, um, we've looked into that to make sure that we have, you know, a building that we can afford.
Now, say we didn't get the DOLA grant, you know, because we've always got a plan for, we always got a plan for the worst. What is your plan?
So this is, uh, it's a city facility that's been built in phases over the past twenty-four years.
Mm-hmm.
There's still a possibility to phase the project.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that would be up to council to choose how to go forward after, you know, at that point.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? All right, well, with that being said, now do I need to adjourn prior to the executive meeting? Or do I need, do we need to call that out? Adjourn after, can, I, I don't have any of the notes to, yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition. Lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest under CRS. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent A. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
It's 7:33 PM and we are adjourning the work session.